Please sign with cell phones, pagers. Like that. Item one, concern, just like this. But it's not already on the agenda. Item two, approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item three, Board of Supervisors. Concerns regarding gross misappropriation of facts presented at the August nineteenth press conference called by United Today, Stronger Tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Watch the press conference that unfolded on Thursday and have some thoughts. No one is more concerned about how the high, how high the construction bid was than the Board of Supervisors responsible to fund it. We inherited a building that ran over capacity only a few years after being built, over thirty years ago. We tried to do it cheaper by adding concrete cells upward, but scientific studies told us building integrity in the foundation would not allow it. We tried to do it cheaper by modernizing the design, but the building already saw two major renovations and a third would not add any bed space. Utilities original to the building and years past normal life cannot be replaced without removing structures and disrupting the entire building, forcing us to pay up to millions of dollars to up to eighty other counties to house our prisoners for several weeks, according to sheriff's jail staff. The community, not us, the community ultimately looked at our seven long years of committee meetings and homework and told us to build a new one without all the same mistakes. We took that charge seriously and refused to downsize or reduce quality. They saw that this was the number one most vetted idea in the last decade in Woodbury County. They saw that the sheriff's office gave tours of the jail to citizens advisory committee members. They saw that several county officials and employees spoke about it on the radio. They saw that we scheduled dozens of dedicated public hearings on design, making every advisor, consultant, engineer, and architect completely available to answer public questions. Everyone saw that except for apparently United Today, Stronger Tomorrow. This organization held an August nineteenth press conference at the courthouse and suddenly considers themselves qualified to host a teach-in on the project. They also rigged their online questionnaire, asking people how they want ARPA funds spent. Do you want to know why they're saying no one wants it spent on the jail, law enforcement, public safety, or the justice system? Because those aren't options in the survey. Pages twenty-three of the ARPA IFR and pages twenty-one to twenty-four of the Treasury FAQ clearly allow those uses in general, so why aren't they listed? I think we know. UTST is represented by Dave Bouchard Jr., who said Woodbury County, quote, "Made the decision under cloak and dagger," unquote. I would remind Dave that he found out about the decision through public news reports on open meetings, not by bugging our houses or cracking some code. He also disingenuously emailed me, quote, "I want to impress just once more that there is no argument from the community that the new facility is needed," unquote. Even while his organization invites speakers to the press conference who argue just that, one of them claiming the jail represents the school-to-prison pipeline. Giving a platform to such ignorance will make this community less safe. Public minutes from the Citizens Advisory Group in twenty nineteen, quote, comments from a local judge thusly. Judges current, quote, "Judges currently meet every week to decide which inmates to let out to avoid overpopulation. It is a public safety issue, either provide more space or compromise public safety. We are getting away from punishment due to lack of bed space," unquote. When we say we don't have a choice, we mean it. We aren't building an opera house. We're thinking about our children and grandchildren. It was not a county action alone that accepted the low bid. The Sioux City Council appointed their member and attorney Dan Moore to the LSC Authority, and he also voted for it, knowing full well the authority would submit an ARPA plan to pay for it. Is the council unhappy with Dan Moore? Does Bob Scott want to put himself back on the LEC Authority? And then there's Ernie Colt with the Carpenters Union. No matter how many times he's told Iowa law does not allow for local preference on this project, Ernie just keeps slamming the county supervisors for the LEC Authority following the law and accepting the low bid. Ernie Colt says the LEC Authority meetings, quote, "All these things are being done behind closed doors, trying to keep it from public knowledge," unquote, and yet of the thirty-five county committees, the LEC Authority is the only one with a direct link from the county's website homepage. It also publishes a tentative meeting schedule for the entire calendar year. This isn't North Korea, Ernie. If you want to participate in the LEC Authority meetings, you just open the door and open your mouth, as you've done several times. I'm not upset that others are upset. That's their right. I'm not upset people are fighting over federal funds airdrop. That's expected. I'm upset because misinformation is needlessly dividing this community. I intend to call it out from this board table right now, because I have concerns too. I'm concerned about the gross mischaracterization of what the voters voted for. The voters voted for a fifty-point-three million dollar bond in March twenty-twenty for the building as designed. Way before the construction bid in October twenty-twenty, we borrowed half of that, upon which we owe seven-point-six million dollars in interest over time. We owe this no matter what. We owe it because the voters voted for us to owe it. The second half will be borrowed in September, and we're hoping the interest rate is less than seven-point-six million due to low interest rates. But let's assume it's the same, and the total is fifteen million. We are being asked to wait our way to a fifteen million dollar price decrease, which no one can guarantee, when we already owe fifteen million dollars in interest, which is guaranteed. This request is grossly irresponsible to the taxpayers. I'm concerned to hear Western Iowa Labor Federation AFL-CIO President Jeff Schudak say the purported cost of upgrades to the current jail being in the tens of millions is, quote, "Over-exaggerated hogwash." Thirty million is the cost of the replacements and renovation, assuming the same thirty-three percent increase shown by the construction bid. Certainly reasonable. I'm concerned that he may not have read the dozens of graphs, pages of graphs, tables, memos, and calculations done earlier through the LEC Citizens Advisory Group, because that cost is itemized therein. Again, an estimated thirty million dollars today to fix all the issues, stay in the current jail, but fail to address the capacity problem. This was a choice the voters had. They didn't choose it. I'm concerned that everyone at the press conference is so sure what a gross misappropriation is with only an interim final rule and no definitive answers from the authorities. The motion passed by the board said, quote, "If applicable." What's so hard about waiting for the final rule and definite answers? One purpose of ARPA is to mitigate present and future pandemics. The largest proposed use of the fifteen-point-six million is for HVAC improvements in the most cramped county building, which will also mitigate the spread of airborne diseases through filtration, segregated air handling units, and negative pressure. The second largest proposed use is for new program space and staff to serve inmates with mental health deficiencies, which make up around half of the jail population. These are both explicitly mentioned in the ARPA IFR. One must be willfully ignorant to tell people what we're doing has nothing to do with COVID relief. I'm concerned multiple speakers said Woodbury County is violating Treasury guidelines by submitting a plan. U.S. Treasury's User Guide FAQ one-point-five states the following. Should recipients submit a recovery plan if they are awaiting approval by legislative or other governance entities on the proposed projects, and such approval is not received as of the end of their reporting period? The answer is yes, provided an updated plan is submitted within sixty days of approval. I'm concerned that Sioux City Mayor Bob Scott stated, quote, "If the county is found to be in error, the taxpayers of Sioux City and Woodbury County will be asked to pay on our tax bills a large portion of this fifteen million dollar cost," unquote. U.S. Treasury FAQ three-point-one states, "In the event that something is funded, purchased, using the recovery funds and reported, and then subsequently is realized that the refunding slash purchase does not qualify for the use of recovery funds, can that report be amended and a correction be made?" Answer: Yes. Recipients can make corrections. Therefore, if ARPA funds are denied for one use but allowed for any other existing Woodbury County budget line item anywhere within the roughly sixty million dollar annual budget, then those dollars are freed up for the jail regardless. I'm concerned that August nineteenth Sioux City Journal front page article says the jail project has come in at over seventy-eight million, and that Woodbury County has already committed twenty million in federal funds dedicated for COVID relief. Those numbers are off by over ten million and five million respectively. I do appreciate that this was corrected afterwards in the online version, but it sure doesn't make our job easier. I'm concerned that WILF President Jeff Schudak purports to represent workers, yet insults our hard-working Building Services employees by saying, quote, "I also question the ability of the people who have maintained this building," unquote. Or, excuse me, continuing, "This equipment goes bad usually because maintenance is overlooked or ignored," unquote. I'm concerned with how nonchalantly he throws Woodbury County's local laborers under the bus, when I bet right now you couldn't name or price even a tenth of what our Building Services Department and Sheriff's Office have already done with hard-earned taxpayer dollars to keep the current jail functioning. I'm concerned that Dave Bouchard does not believe the use of ARPA funds toward the jail represents, quote, "Deliverable gains to the community," simply because the project will be done in part by non-local labor. The new jail provides a safer work environment for our corrections officers from a health, transport security, and supervision standpoint. It provides more efficient spaces for judges to clear through court cases. It allows space to segregate inmates suffering from psychological issues, rather than have them present a danger to the general population. It allows more separation and classification, helping our officers mitigate and respond to violent threats to themselves and others. It increases medical care space, rather than rely on more expensive and more dangerous solutions outside. Again, I'm concerned that Dave doesn't believe vastly improved working conditions for our CWA, Civilian Jailer's Union, doesn't qualify as a, quote, "Deliverable gain." I'm concerned that Jeff Schudak claimed, quote, "Small upgrades can help the current jail get by until the building costs decreases," unquote. I've heard our chief deputy Tony Wingert say once, quote, "Corrections is the unsung hero of law enforcement. They don't get the credit that they deserve as part of the law enforcement family, and they have a very tough job to do," unquote. It's grossly disrespectful for Jeff Schudak and Ernie Colt to recommend more Band-Aids, short-term, cheap, low-quality fixes to their working conditions. I'm also concerned about the accuracy of Jeff Schudak's crystal ball. Fact: The new jail needs over a million pounds of steel for cell block. Fact: At the time of the construction bid, we bought it for about forty-six cents per pound from Steel Cell of North America. Fact: Two weeks ago, their going rate was up to one dollar and forty-two per pound. Fact: Steel Cell is preparing for a two-dollar-per-pound price by the end of the year. Fact: Forty-six cents is less than two dollars. I'm concerned by the repeated claim from Ernie Colt that ninety to ninety-five percent of the work will not be local. Of the fifty-eight million dollar construction bid, CW Suter is over thirteen million. Thompson Electric is almost six million. Not even counting the local ironworkers to be hired by Poly Jail Company, you only need to bring up two subs to show this for what it is, a lie. I'm concerned that Pastor James Mosley Jr. forgets Romans thirteen-four, when he says it's, quote, "Ridiculous to spend the money on the jail rather than help the needy." The foundational function of a God-fearing government is to punish evil. Exactly how do you do that in the twenty-first century with a jail that's over capacity? I applaud Pastor James for doing his God-given duty, to provide for the needy in the community. But if he's trying to get in the way of the government doing its God-given duty, then in his words, that's not good. I'm concerned by comments made by Jen Pellent, representing thirty-eight Iowa Unions with WILF, in which she conflated private, for-profit prisons with public prisons. She stated, "We all know that the biggest problem in this country is prisons that run for profit," unquote, and then if the new jail would be completed, that the last thing our elected officials would want is empty beds, saying, quote, "They want them full," unquote. No, Jen, we don't want people to break the law and go to jail and overcrowd it, but they do. What I want is for our jail to last for fifty years, not thirty. And if federal inmates can benefit Woodbury County taxpayers in the meantime, why should we tax them more just to make you happy? I'm concerned that the UTST organization is misinforming our local residents of the holding process for the U.S. Marshals and ICE. In his call to action, Dave Bouchard said, quote, "We don't have the kind of rehabilitation infrastructure we need once these folks get out of prison into these communities that they're not familiar," unquote. But any outside feral inmates held locally are released back to their original jurisdiction, not here in Sioux City. That's not true. I'm concerned with Winnebago Tribe of Nebraska member Tricia Ettinger saying, quote, "I'm tired of being targeted," unquote, and claiming that funding illegally mandated jail is, quote, "Targeting BIPOC community members," unquote. That's Black, Indigenous, people of color, I believe. Crimes are committed by individuals. I'm a second-generation immigrant. My father is Chinese and escaped Laos. Given the fact that's the strongest part of my ancestry, if I told you I'm a person of color, you'd have no right to say otherwise. My wife is one-hundred percent Honduran. In my formative years, I spent a lot of time with the Supiak Tribe in Nunwalak, Alaska, and the Havasupai Tribe at the bottom of the Grand Canyon. None of that matters if I go and rob a liquor store. If I commit a crime, I do it as Matthew Young, not as a BIPOC community member. It's the same for Tricia and everyone with the Winnebago Tribe she represented last Thursday. I'm concerned that Tricia Ettinger asks why Woodbury County leaders are trying to communicate underneath the table, quote, and, quote, "Trying to keep it hush-hush," unquote, without any evidence of that whatsoever. If Woodbury County was keeping it hush-hush, would supervisors have driven over a dozen of Woodbury County's rural city councils to present the issue and issue and answer questions, and ultimately receive overwhelming written support from rural city leaders? Because Supervisor Keith Raddig did that. I was concerned when I saw Ernie Colt nodding behind the podium in approval as a woman told him they are going to target Native Americans like her and put her into the new jail. As Ernie stands behind a working microphone, where's the backbone to stand up for our local law enforcement? I'm concerned by comments from Native Americans in Sioux City saying, quote, "Where's our cut?" unquote. When Sioux City receives more ARPA funds than Woodbury County, and ARPA allocates twenty billion dollars to tribal governments, which even have a superior arrangement, by the way, where all funds obligated to tribes are available indefinitely until expended. We just had another homicide here. If you want to start a call to action to actually help the community and lower our jail cost to zero, then tell people to follow the Ten Commandments and the American derivatives of that. Tell them, stop breaking the law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Items four through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items. That was just an information item, Ernie.
Information item?
Mm-hmm. There's no vote involved.
Throw a bunch of names out there and calling people ignorant, and it's an information item?
Yeah, it is an information item.
Very respectful of your people. Very respectful. Appreciate that.
Items four through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Four, approval of the minutes of the August seventeen meeting. Five, approval of claims. Six, Board Administration approval of notice to terminate farm tenancy letter. Seven, Board Administration approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in zero-three-one, also known as one-eleven Sioux Street, for Tuesday, September seventh at four-thirty-five. Item eight, County Treasurer, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials RS. B, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials CF. C, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials JN. D, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest MHC. E, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials DB. F, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials GT. Approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for B and ER. H is approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials MM. I, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials DS-dash-S. J, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Yes Communities. K, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for New Perspectives Incorporated. Item nine is Human Resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, approval authorization to initiate hiring process. C, presentation of award certificate to David Dawson and Carla Polly. End of consent agenda. I will move approval of the consent agenda. Motion by DeWitt, second by Reddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item ten, County Sheriff, approval of request to pay accumulated compensatory time intermittently to employee CG for the remainder of the year.
Good afternoon, Sheriff Sheehan. The action item in front of you is, we received word last week from one of our employees, a longtime loyal, very dedicated employee of the initials CG and the intent to retire sometime near the end of the year. This, this employee has about a hundred and fifty hours of comp time on the books. The request is that you would make a one-time exception and agree to pay this employee in equal increments over the last nine pay periods of the year. I would, I would ask you to approve this. The reason is, the employee, if, basically, the county's going to pay for this comp time, one way or the other. If you deny the request, the employee will retire December twenty-second so that that employee can receive all that comp time benefit on the last paycheck of the year, okay? That employee will then use all of the vacation time prior to December twenty-second, meaning they will be done working in the office sometime in October. Because of the department that this employee is working in and the crazy amount of work that, that is a result of the courts being kind of bottlenecked because of COVID and now being open, what that means is the sheriff's office will have to backfill while they are on their vacation, and will be paying, I'm not even sure how much, a lot of overtime to backfill that position in October, November, and December. If you approve it, they won't start using their vacation time until around Christmas, and their last working day will be sometime around the first of March. I'm sorry, their last day on the books will be sometime around the first day of March. Meaning, we won't be paying all that overtime in October, November, and December, thereby also having enough time to, to make promotions and do other things that will, will alleviate that, that burden of, of having all that overtime. So that's just a little historical background, and why, why I think it benefits the county is it's going to save us probably three months of maybe twenty to forty hours of overtime a week over the course of two or three months. So I would just ask that you approve this. It's a one-time thing, a case-by-case deal. I'm not asking you to change the county's policies. Moving forward, this is just a one-time request.
Sounds reasonable. Works as a benefit to the sheriff's office for staffing and all that. I'd pick up, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
I'll move approval. Second.
Motion by Young, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Secondary roads, approval to set October twelfth at four forty-five for public hearing to discuss the establishment of a Level B road system and to direct the county engineer to publish as required by state law and County Ordinance Number Seventeen.
Good afternoon, Mark Narwood, Berry County Engineer. Coming in today to continue work that we've been doing with the board and the budget director on our gravel road improvement program. One of the things that Woodbury County has never taken advantage of is we passed a Level B ordinance, which is a minimum maintenance road ordinance, back in two thousand and four, and yet we have put no roads into that system. We have sixty-six miles of dirt roads, roughly, about another sixty, that are lightly-used gravel roads that have no one living along them, that were outside of the parameters we used as part of our urban development project for the gravel road program. I think we heard a couple of weeks ago, when we discussed a road vacation hearing on a dirt road, how an individual had gotten stuck in the snow out on one of those roads when they entered it based on directions provided by TomTom and didn't realize that that road was, was not being improved for winter travel. Part of the Level B system is, we establish a system of signing at each end of the roads, warning that they're minimum maintenance, and warning in cases where we do not do snow removal that that is the case. A number of our gravel roads, we don't open all winter, again, because nobody lives on them. They're not a school bus or a mail route. They are land-access roads and serve in that, that system of use. There's eleven items within the maintenance policy addressing everything from blading and snow removal to road surfacing, crowns, signing, how often they're inspected or checked, that are within the Level B ordinance. And Section Eight goes into the exemption from liability. I, I think it's worth taking a look at these lower-used parts of our system that are still very necessary for land access, but not necessary, not as necessary for use on a day-by-day basis. Our proposal would be, we've shown these on a map that was included in the board's background package. You can see where they're at. My GIS technician will go through, and what we'll do is we'll create a listing of all of those roads that would then be published in the paper. The map of the roads that are included in the system and that same listing will be put out on the county website. We'll be doing as much as we can between now and October twelfth to get out the word on these roads so that people are aware of it. For most of these roads, I mean, there's really going to be no change in the way that we're taking care of them before or after. The big key is that we're signing it and protecting the county from liability for that lower level of maintenance that we already provide on these roads. So it's my recommendation that we look at setting a hearing, October twelfth, twenty-twenty-one at four forty-five P.M.
Move it.
Is motion by Monson, second by Reddick. Is that a one-time hearing?
It is a one-time hearing, and then the roads are established as part of the system by resolution.
Is the one from last week on here? That road we talked about?
Garner Avenue. Yes, that is part of the system.
Any other questions for Mark? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We will recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Bennett-McDonald-Smithland Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Item twelve, approval of the minutes of the August seventeen meeting.
Move it.
Motion by Monson, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. We will adjourn the Bennett-McDonald-Smithland Drainage District Trustees Meeting and continue the Board of Supervisors meeting. Item thirteen, Mr. Reddick, approval letter of support for water trail on the Little Sioux River.
This is, again, what was brought up, you know, a couple of years back. It's been a long work in the process. We've included conservation in this process. David Gleiser has been involved, and we have a tentative paddling date even scheduled with the Iowa DNR in the area to kind of see this water trail. Hopefully, there's going to be water there. I saw a picture of the Des Moines River over by my old home, and it was, it was grass. There was no river, so. That was the Des Moines River. But anyway, this is that letter support. I brought it up last week to let you know that I would have it on the agenda. We're going to compile these along with, you know, Conservation has to write one as well. And we'll give that to Simcoe and part of that package of requests for, what would you call it, requests for funding or requests for?
Grant through the DNR.
Grant through the DNR.
For five other counties involved.
Yeah, we, so initially, you know, I looked at just doing this as a Woodbury County thing, but I just think, you know, when we were looking at the map, it made more sense to involve a few other counties, and, and let's make this a really cool water trail that you can go, you know, almost from Spencer to, you know.
Sioux City.
Yeah, well, not Sioux City, but to Woodbury County. So, but anyway, that's the letter support, so I'm just asking for the Board of Supervisors to support this, and move forward with it.
So it's all considered on grant? No burden on?
There could be some financial requests, but I don't, you know, most of the other water trail funding requests, county matches have been somewhere around ten or fifteen thousand, of which, you know, we have potential. 10,000 or 15,000, of which, you know, we have potential gaming or local option sales tax revenue available for that. Of course, we don't know what that request will be at any point. It, and it does depend on level of design and some of the water trails, you know, that they don't have anything that takes a lot more engineering and design to build access points. We currently have a number of access points. The engineers would just have to analyze whether or not improvements need to be made to stem erosion or, you know, create more access for somebody with maybe a disability that would like to go to the river as well.
Dan Heisel with Woodbury County Conservation. I just wanted to comment on that. It is part of the Inca Pudida Canoe Trail. That's been in existence, the county's District 3. I think there's six or seven of us that supported that and we do have brochures and we have, did start that trail years ago. So like Keith said, a lot of the landings are in place. A lot of the accesses are in place. There's water access grants that are available. If we need to put in a boat ramp or support facilities, there is grant dollars available. It's, it used to be the marine fuel tax dollars, it's now called water access grants. It'll pay for those accesses and, and help. But what's nice about this is it'll be a designated DNR water trail. So any of their publications and brochures they put out, it'll actually list that. So we'll be on those maps and be a destination for people. And that's what we're really looking for is bringing quality of life to Woodbury County and getting more people using the river when it has water. And so, it's a good deal. Thank you.
And it does, it does improve the access points in the, in the process and we get a lot of engineering that we wouldn't be able to get as just Woodbury County.
I'd move to approve the chair sign this letter to Simcoe.
Second.
Motion by Monson, second by Raddick. Any further questions for anyone involved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five zero. Reports on committee meetings.
I have none.
I attended last week's Rolling Hills Governance Board. All 14 regions were represented at an ISAC meeting in, in or near Des Moines the week prior. And basically, the state doesn't know what they don't know and we don't really have any direction going forward. It's, it's very frustrating in, in that one region was having a lot of trouble somehow in their own governance, how the system worked. I don't, I don't know what all the problem was. But it's, the, the representative or the senator from that area went ahead and proceeded with getting the mental health business changed back from regional. After it got changed from state to county to regional, now it's going back to state somehow. And we still don't have any real clear direction on how things are going to work. We just know that the state seems to think they have a handle on it. So that said, it's, it's a little bit frustrating for, for all concerned. Some of the other issues were, for example, our, our director of our region is an employee of Buena Vista County, so what if the region's closed down? How is that going to affect, you know, the county's budget and those kind of things? It's just, there's too many things that aren't known. Personal opinion is that we had one of the best regions in the state, one of the most successful. And here we are sitting there looking at, looking at that being disrupted and unclear which way it's going to go. So, that's all I have. Yeah, yeah.
I do have one I forgot.
What's that?
They had an open house at the Friendship House, which is run by Sulan Mental Health. And the CEO from Rolling Hills was there. That's a beautiful facility now. They run between 140 to 160 folks a month. Down because of COVID, they're running like 25 to 35 per day. But when they get back in the swing of things, I think they'll be up to 40 or 50 a day. It's a great facility for those folks that need some social issue assistance. And the CEO pretty much said the same thing to me that you just said.
Difficult spot, but they did a wonderful job with the Friendship House, so. All right, moving on. Round two of citizens' concerns. Each individual speaking on citizens' concerns will have three minutes and will speak once. We will not tolerate any disruption and understand that citizens' concerns in this case do not involve anything that's an action item, so. Name and address, please.
Certainly. My name is Cindy Hansen. I live at 2112 South Henry Street. I'm here as the Secretary of the Sioux City Branch of the NAACP. And I'm here to express our displeasure with the action taken on August 17th to use COVID relief funding for building the jail. Aside from the fact that jails disproportionately incarcerate persons of color, this decision negatively impacts Woodbury County residents by failing to attend to primary goals of this federal relief bill. There are needs for investment in mental health, substance abuse prevention, rehabilitation, job training, things that are woefully underfunded in Woodbury County and have been exacerbated by the pandemic. I have concerns with Supervisor Ung's presentation that public safety is an either-or proposition. Either let prisoners out or build a bigger jail. There are options, including substance abuse prevention, rehabilitation efforts that don't require incarceration. I have concerns that Supervisor Ung believes the penal system is colorblind when numerous studies clearly demonstrate there is disproportionate incarceration and sentencings against people of color when rates and crimes committed are exactly the same. I urge this board to truly consider the needs of this county, to truly consider how to best protect and serve them. Putting people behind bars is not the way to do that. Thank you.
Manape Lemire, 1328 Street. Akichto Ho Chidai Machapi.
What was your first name, sir?
Manape. Akichto Ho Chidai Machapi. No, Manape Ho Chinchiga. Excuse me, sir, I'm speaking to you. I find the presentation that you gave very disrespectful, uncouth, and patronized everybody here. I have some concerns about our approach and I hope that his presentation doesn't speak for you other men. And I hope that you, you guys can counsel him a little bit on how to talk to the constituents here. I believe that, I believe that what transpired can create social disruptions. The people are going to fight over 5 million. That might be crumbs to you. Maybe, maybe down the road, you might throw us a bone. And, and the people are going to have to fight over that. The discord that comes from these sort of things. 20 million in 15 just swiped out of our, out of our hands because of inflation rates, right? Or whatever the appropriate term is. And maybe we need to call a timeout on this because, because I kind of wonder, when I, when I look at these hills, I see our homelands. And I kind of wonder sometimes if the city has ever reached out to the state archaeological people. Those are big chunks of earth taken out over there. And I kind of wonder if, if archaeological surveys were done. There's two groups of people that were here before the Dakota People. They're called the Oniota and the Great Oasis. You have it over here at the Sioux City Museum. At the Sioux City Museum, it talks about the Floyd River. And our people buried them on those bluffs, just like War Eagle, just like War Eagle. So I, I want you to take that into consideration. There's something called NAGPRA laws, federal laws that protect our graves and our remains. So that might be a card that I might throw on the table. But also, I want to talk about my father's work. My father's name is Frank Lemire. And, and the work that he's done, I would love to see those resources, some of those resources towards proactive, just like the, the lady said before. Some of those resources can be put towards proactive approaches in this community. And I believe that because of his passing, the, the indigenous community here is attempting to organize a little bit better. We're trying to have a hub where we can have funerals and, and have celebrations and contribute economically in a positive manner to this community. But I see $15 million swiped out from under. Not just, not just the native community, but others too, others too. But I can only speak on behalf of the native community. And also, I have to defend my sister, Tricia Eddinger, a Oneobego tribal member. My father was a Oneobego tribal member. And don't, don't ever, don't ever talk down on my people. Tak yas.
Dennis, would you give a 30-second? Would you give a 30-second when they're at 2:30? Would you remind them that, when they're at 2:30, would you remind them they have 30 seconds left? Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Val Yucan, 3205 Ninth Street. I'm just going to comment on what you were saying, Rocky, about the Rolling, Rolling Hills. I believe they have a meeting tomorrow. I'm not sure, I couldn't quite understand what you were saying. But I do think that some of this money, this COVID money, however it looks, when we bring some of this money in, it needs to address the mental health situation in our community. I don't know how it all gets divided. The people that come together to make some of those decisions, and I know that Rolling Hills has some of that money that comes in and they help Sanford Center and they, they help other outreach organizations. We need to concentrate and we may even need to help put some of that money into our police department, our sheriff department. So that they have trained mental health individuals that can go out on scenes with them to help them. I don't know what all this looks like. I just know that we need to concentrate on our kids and their mental health and overall, mental health in, in Sulan. Thank you.
Val, just so you know, that typically the Rolling Hills meetings are on the fourth Wednesday, but for a short time, they were the third.
Okay.
So they are going back to that next month.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm on the phone.
I will take you after Mr. Colt speaks.
We can get him on the phone. Go ahead.
No, no, I don't, this is exactly, I'm trying to get somebody down here, so just make it, because I don't know if they're.
Okay, Ernie Colt, 4526 Perry Way. So yeah, pretty disrespectful remarks and I suppose you could call it both ways. So I'll tell you why the people are mad. Voted on a $50.3 million bond referendum for a new jail. Had the Law Enforcement Center authority approach labor, asked us to get on board, help promote this bond referendum. We had meetings with labor, building trades meetings, had several contractors, the sheriff's department out there lined all that stuff up, laid it out, because we were promised work. We were promised this was going to help our community. Lots of broken promises. Lots of broken promises. When it comes right down to it, it's all about the money, not about our community. That $50.3 million bond referendum that was voted on? Yeah, we had meetings on that. Good job, Keith, getting everybody's input. Did we have those same meetings on the 15 and a half million dollars of COVID relief money? No. As soon as those, as soon as that started, I was invited to every meeting. I was invited to every meeting. I get these secret emails with the agenda on it. I get invited. As soon as I started opposing a little bit, I stopped getting invited. Imagine that. Showing a little opposition, you get booted. Is that how it works? I don't think so. I think what you've done to the community, what you've done to the people of Woodbury County, the workers here that want to work, that don't want to sit home and collect unemployment, the workers that are going out and getting vaccinated so we can work in the hospitals and the health clinics and the places that really matter to our community. That's what we want to do is help our community. That's all we've got in mind. And what did we get? What did we get out of it? We got shut out. That's why we're pissed. Disrespectful ignorance, ignorance to the law, ignorance to the Treasury's interim rulings, not even acknowledging some of the language in there, not even acknowledging. So what happens? What happens when it's denied? And we're halfway through the project. Somebody's going to get creative, ain't we? We're going to get creative and raise taxes. That's what we're going to do. It's going to go on the backs of the working people that are here trying to work, trying to make a living and aren't allowed to. Who's disrespectful? Not us. We want what's ours. I don't think that's asking too much from our community leaders.
Somebody on the phone?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, William Burrows, 4409 Forty-seventh Street, Sioux City. Chairman DeWitt, just two questions. Number one, will the remarks by Supervisor Ung be part of the public record as it relates to the minutes of this meeting?
Yes. We should move to receive them.
And number, number two, did the rest of the board have privy to his statement prior to this meeting?
No, I don't think so, and I wasn't, but.
Okay. And then, how will we know how the other four supervisors feel about his remarks?
Well, since Mr. Ung based all these remarks on fact, I don't think that's very hard to defend.
Well, I'm just concerned that if this ends up in litigation, and there's such a thing as fact-checking, so. I'm just curious how the other four supervisors feel about his remarks, either positive or negative, in support or not support.
Is this a voting issue or?
I'm just, yeah, we could probably, you could probably do it now. I meant Supervisor Wright, yourself, Supervisor, the fellow to your left.
Well, again, Mr. Burrows, Mr. Ung stated everything as factual as, as he could possibly be, so I don't have problems with the facts.
I'll move to receive it into the record.
I'll second the motion to receive it. As a further discussion on this, if anybody on the Board of Supervisors wants to put something on the agenda as a statement and make their statement, that's their right as a Board of Supervisor. It doesn't require any of us say we agree, disagree, what our opinion is of the matter. He wanted to make a statement, he said it, and that's it.
Motion by Ung, second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion, Mr. Supervisor Raddick. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed the motion, Mr. Supervisor Raddig.
The motion was made by Ung to receive the, the, his, uh, statement as part of the record, uh, second by Raddig, and it was voted in five to zero, so it is now part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Jen Palance. I, um, represent the Western Iowa Labor Federation, and our office is located at thirty thirty-eight South Lakeport. Uh, I just wanna rebut a couple things from Mr. Ung's statement. Um, first of all, we're not here to insult workers or anybody who's ever worked on this project before, we're here to defend workers. The, the truth of the matter is, is that workers pay more in taxes, dollar for dollar, than corporations or wealthy people or whatever. So when this money comes back to us, fifteen point six million dollars, that's money that was paid for by workers in the first place. These are our tax dollars, and they deserve to be used on things for, for working families that enrich the lives of working families in this community. And, you know, I would also say that Mr. Ung has his concerns, I have concerns, I have confer- concerns that you're sitting up there conflating evil with criminality. This, we're talking about a county jail here, not a federal supermax prison, and you're acting like you're housing a bunch of Jeffrey Dahmers. These are your constituents, these are members of your community. People make mistakes. One of the biggest things you can do to prevent crime is invest in education. Maybe if you spent your fifteen point six million dollars on that, you wouldn't need to keep building bigger jails. And maybe, and maybe if you would use good union labor on your projects, you wouldn't have dilapidated buildings that you have to replace. My concern for this, for this now, is you're gonna spend all this money, which could be better spent elsewhere, but you're gonna spend all this money, again, not use good union labor, and we're gonna be back here again in ten years, fifteen years, asking for a hundred million dollars to build another jail, and not using union labor on that one either.
Matthew King, twenty-five hundred Rebecca Street. Um, I just have a short something that I've, I've typed up. First, I do wanna start with, um, Matthew Ung, same name. I'm very glad you were able to get everything off of your chest, it's important to get those feelings out so we can process them. I don't agree with you, but I understand that there's some hurt there, and you had to get that out, and I appreciate that. I'm a teacher, I think teaching our youth is super important. I like to teach them to be good citizens, to go out into the world and to help people. And I really hope, at the end of the day, you can at least respect that. Um, the inflated price that we've been given for the new Law Enforcement Center is hard to swallow. Um, the idea that you're going to take emergency COVID funding for the law enforcement is just terrible. We, we need to update the Law Enforcement Center. Nobody here disagrees with that.
That's pre-vented.
You're a funny guy. Um, the, the money that we're, we're proposing, the money that you're taking from the money that, that should be benefiting our, our community in the case of COVID, that's just a misappropriation of dollars. Um, there's tons of evidence out there, prevention, prevention will always beat out punishment. If we invest a dollar in prevention, we're gonna save multiple dollars down the road. There's plenty of science out there, there's plenty of facts out there. Um, all you need to do is listen to the people of our county. If you talk to people, you're gonna quickly learn how we're hurting and what we need. This pandemic has rattled the best of us at our core, and the assistance our people need is not shiny or bars, that's not gonna help anybody. The assistance we need is homeless shelters. In April, another emergency shelter was closed down. We have people on the streets with nowhere to go, nowhere to sleep. We have people going hungry. We have beds, we, we need beds for people. We have families that don't have enough food for everybody at the table. We have brothers and sisters that are carrying the weight of the world, and they have no one to talk to. We need mental health services. These are all things that we need. We need social programs that benefit your community, that give people a purpose. We need funds to benefit us as a community and not imprison us as a community. Most of all, we need a voice, and I understand that right now, our voice is, is very small, and you're just allotting us the small time at the end of the, of the meeting, but please don't stop listening. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sun Rose Ironshell, Lakota Sioux Hemiye. I am concerned for the, the land. I am a museum studies professional, I have archaeological background, and I wanted to bring up the NAGPRA law and, and just ask if you know what the NAGPRA law is. Yeah? And so that was created in nineteen ninety. Uh, as a Native American indigenous Sioux woman, uh, I'm very concerned with our culture being lost within all the construction sites. It is common practice that for every construction site, there needs to be a surveyor, so that if any cultural items are found, that the tribes will be notified and the museum will be notified, and that we can save that and rescue that as a part of our own, uh, not only Native American legacy, but American legacy as a Sioux city as well. Um, so I wanna also ask, was there any cultural survey done in this project? Do we have a Thibault officer on your project?
Nothing I'm acquainted with, no.
Okay, then, um, there's also Public Law one oh one dash six zero one, um, that lists that, and lists those sections on those requirements of having a, a survey done. Also, the excavation section, C, um, Unit One, under Archaeological Resources Protection Act of nineteen seventy-nine. And, um, my services are available if you need any cultural surveyor as well. So I just wanted to, um, ask those questions. Also, being a, you know, Lakota woman, um, there's all kinds of cultures all over the world, and people can go back to their countries of origin to learn. My, my country of origin is here, kinda underneath of these bricks, and this is all I have to learn from. And so I would like to continue learning and saving those legacies for the next coming generations. Wopla.
Don Barnes, twenty oh seven Boise. I'm a union carpenter. I feel that we do an extremely good job. We do go back and fix other people's mistakes. I sat here, and I'm listening, and you guys find it okay to award this jail to an out-of-town contractor? Not only does it affect our jobs, but it affects restaurants, everything else here in town. Yeah, these people are gonna come in, they're gonna spend a little bit of money, but that money's going back to their communities, it's not staying in our community. We need to keep our money here, make our community better, make it stronger. And by you guys letting it go somewhere else, that's taking away from all of us. I see Mr. Ung sitting up there, he's commented, a lot of different comments, and he sits up there, and you can see him smirking and acting like he's better than. That's just the way I'm seeing it.
So is everybody else, by the way.
So, I want you to all think about something. You're all voted into office, correct? Okay? Remember that come next election.
My name is David Bishaw. I'm the regional organizer for United Today, Stronger Tomorrow in Iowa, Nebraska, and the Sioux River Valley. My address is one seven seven eight three Palace Road. Now, first, I'm going to start by saying, uh, Mr. Ung, we've had lots of communication together, as well as you and I, Rocky, we've exchanged emails back and forth. You do a marvelous job of, of cutting up my quotes and making them seem incredibly dis- dis- disingenuine. Um, but I'm not here to talk about that today, I'm here to read a, uh, statement by Pastor Mosley of the New Life Church. He says, greetings today. I'm very disappointed by the misuse of fifteen point six million dollars in funds. I strongly believe that the fund should be used for our community to jumpstart and create more resources in this season of this pandemic and moving forward. I also would say that the Woodbury County Supervisors were put into office by the people and for the people, and with that said, I do believe it's time to change the direction of the use of this fifteen point six million dollars in funds, uh, to the direction of the funds being used for our great community. The people should not be ignored by leadership that they put in office. I beseech the Woodbury County Supervisors to listen to the people. Now, I will also say, and I need want to, I cannot express this enough, this is the fourth most expensive prison project in the Midwest region. It's thirty percent over budget. Now, if I were to go to the grocery store, and I grew up poor, working class, patches on patches, if my mom gave me the last twenty dollars in her pocket to go to the grocery store, and if milk was a buck and a half expensive, you can be sure I wasn't gonna grab that milk without her permission. This is thirty percent over budget, thirty percent. Now, the Woodbury County residents got to vote on fifty million. Where does their voice and their input stop? It jumped up by thirty percent, they didn't get to put that input in. This money needs to be focused on prevailing wage jobs, Davis Bacon jobs, and if you hear the comments by Mayor Bob Scott the other day, um, they are going to follow Bear- Davis Bacon law when they, uh, when they start to appropriate the funds that come into Sioux City. Now, my challenge for the board is to withdraw this decision for the fifteen point six million to go to this prison project, and actually take a moment to speak to your constituents about where this money should be focused, because that's what I've been doing. I've been speaking to your constituents in your absence. So I do challenge you for that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Faith Taylor, I live on thirty-two sixty Jones Street. Um, I came here today just because of the issue of the fifteen million, fifteen and a half million dollar increase in the budget that we had on this prison. Now, I know you, Matthew, uh, mentioned a lot of times that the state told you to do this job, the state told you to use this much money and have this good of an infrastructure, and I believe you, I believe that that is your job to listen to what the state wants of, wants of you, but I think it's even more important for you to listen to what the people of your county want from you. And that is for you to not misuse fifteen and a half million dollars. I can feel the disrespect that those union workers are getting from you, and you know what? I can see that this issue is just an annoyance in your guys' faces. That is not acceptable, and you have to listen to your people. Thank you.
We asked that you only speak once, Ernie.
Different, different subject. I've gotten to speak several times before, but I know the FDA has approved the new Pfizer vaccine, and I'm just wondering, uh, what the, what the plans are for the county moving forward, and, uh, trying to promote people getting vaccinated.
We're not under any obligation that I'm aware of to force people to get vaccinations, or?
I didn't ask you to force anybody, I asked you to get a plan to try to promote vaccinations for the safety of our community.
Uh, no. No, we don't.
We have a district health department that does that.
They need some help up there, too, their facilities are in bad shape.
Well, if we don't have any more citizen concerns, we're gonna move on with board concerns.
Pass.
Uh, September sixteenth, the pipeline meeting, and we have anyone planning on going to that? I was just concerned if there's gonna be three of us, that we would need to post.
What meeting?
That pipeline meeting, the CO2 pipeline.
What day is that?
September sixteen.
What day of the week? Is it a Thursday?
Wednesday.
Uh... No, it's Thursday.
Okay, Thursday.
Is it in the morning?
No.
Well, Karen, would you post a, would you post that regardless, just in case?
That's a, that's a Thursday.
It's six PM Thursday at the, I, or at the Sioux City Event Center.
Well, we'll post it regardless.
Okay. Yeah, this is for a compressed, uh, uh, carbon dioxide, um, pipeline that will carry from...
Or liquid or gas?
Carbon dioxide.
Will it be compressed to liquid, or?
Uh, it's, yeah, well, it's compressed gas.
Okay.
It's not a liquid, so it will be a compressed gas pipeline, it's crossing the Missouri River, cutting through Woodbury County near our new, uh, interchange area, and, uh, then going up north into Plymouth County.
Okay.
Uh, the board does have regulatory authority on that. Are you getting my emails, Mark? Are you getting my emails?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I had you on the distribution.
Oh, yes.
Okay, very good.
We've done this before.
Yeah, this is different, this is...
I know.
...to carbon sequestration wells in North Dakota...
Yeah.
...as opposed to providing natural gas or something for folks.
We'll, we'll deal with it when the meetings hit, and we'll have more questions.
I, I will be there, and then, uh, any other board members can make it, if you can.
So, you just will stay up there, I was gonna bring up that ISG deal, I don't know if we, you know, as a board, do we choose ISG, or should we push, pursue for a local engineering firm? Then, I know the continuity on the project.
Um, if, if I could make a recommendation, I'm meeting with our, actually, we only have one neighbor that's in this with us, and that's Plymouth County. So, uh, I, I, I was willing to check and see if they would be interested in going with a different direction.
'Cause if somebody like Macon Creek can do it, I'd rather see the money here, but I don't, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. Uh, I can solicit whether they would be interested in doing that.
Sure.
They're both small staffs. This typically takes one engineer and two or three technicians, because you have the initial technician who's monitoring the, the, uh, topsoil, the one with the, uh, excavation and, uh, installation, and then the one that follows up to make sure they don't throw the topsoil and bottom of the trench.
Well, clearly, we want the job done right, too, so I, I'm not just trying to give somebody any preference, but, you know, if we have an opportunity locally, I'd like to pursue it.
Yeah. And, uh, I, I just don't wanna jump in with a, uh, an agreement to hire anybody at this point in time till they actually have a construction permit.
And nor are we gonna settle anything at this meeting, so...
No.
No, I just wanted to throw that out there, board concern. Uh, Val, I'm glad you stayed. Um, I did wanna address, in the new facility, and I'm not gonna ask anything, I just wanted to let you know, we do have six million worth of mental health improvements as planned in the, in the new facility, which consists of six exam and isolation rooms, the director's office, thirty-two separate isolation cells or pods, and we also make room for separation for male, female, and whatever other gender classifications there are. So I just wanted to let you know, you brought that up as a concern, uh, that was something I had an answer for, so that was it.
Mr. Monson?
Nothing.
Mr. Wright?
Uh, briefly, I would just like to follow up on the citizen, uh, concerns at the end of this meeting. Uh, Board Supervisors has listened to concerns, in my case, for seven years on this one topic, for others of you, a little bit less. This was one meeting. I'm, I'm sorry that it was such a challenging experience for some members of the public to, to hear our concerns, my concerns. Um, but in, as one of the speakers, Matthew, said, we all did get a lot off our chests. Again, I'm sorry, it was a hard experience. The, uh, facts unfortunately seem to continue to fall on deaf ears. I heard there was a lot of talk of disrespect, and, and people, uh, were triggered enough to criticize my facial expressions, that's all, that's always how you know they have nothing to say about the facts. So I could've criticized facial expressions tonight, but I didn't, 'cause I stuck to the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. I have three things, actually, on board concerns, and probably less concerns, but just things I wanna make public for the rest of the board. I was approached, one... Um, I was approached one day last week by a gentleman that represents Para nine one one, known as a paranormal group, that is interested in investigating what may or may not be, or not be, at the current Prairie Hill facility. Um...
Is this a TV show?
No, it's not a TV show, it is a local one, I've got the man's name and his contact information, it's just a local, uh, group. He did thank me for my time, hope it didn't sound like a oddball, not everyone believes in the paranormal. Uh, he just said, basically, we would like to have the opportunity to provide answers to those that used to work in the building, to prove or disprove if the building is occupied by those no longer livin- living. Uh, next, it was, we would sign any waiver needed, and any evidence would be shared with the board and the sheriff's office, and also, anyone from the board and sheriff's office would be welcome to join. I, I've been in that building many several times, and it has a history. Um, so that'll be something that we'll probably discuss at a later date, because, uh, it came about because we had talked about demolition of the building, and, and we're still quite a ways out from that. Another thing was Dennis and I met with a gentleman from, uh, I can't rec- Trust, yes, that sounds right, from a trust, is the name of the company, they represent solar panels. Uh, they are out of Buena Vista, I think Storm Lake, and we investigated, uh... putting solar in, and obviously, we've got, uh, a couple purses of land around the county that could possibly be used that, or benefit from that. And secondly, I got a late question from a group that may want to bid or be interested in bidding for our AVI for the upgrade for the sound and audio system in this room. Mr. Malloy is looking at that, and will be, may or may not be moving forward on that, because he did have some solid numbers the last time, and if I remember, his comment was that their, their bid was good for sixty days. So, kinda time is of the essence on that, I do not remember where that group is from, but, um, that's all I have. Final call. We're adjourned.